Tonight, the Allen County Commissioners Debate. Coming up next on a special edition of Primetime 39.
Primetime 39, a political forum discussing local, state, and national legislation. Made possible by the financial support of viewers like you.
Welcome to this special edition of Primetime 39. I'm Lee Kelso. Tonight, we have what we believe to be the first ever live televised debate between Allen County Commissioner candidates. This debate is being brought to you by WFWA, the Greater Fort Wayne Chamber of Commerce, IPFW, and the Mike Down Center for Indiana Politics. There are three members of the Allen County Board of Commissioners, and they are elected in two staggering terms. This year, we'll be electing one of the three. Candidates for the county commissioner have to live in the specific districts, but they run at large, which means all of us get to vote for them regardless of the district from which they are running and the district in which we all live. The county commissioners serve as the executive and legislative branch in county government. That's a bit different from city government, which has the mayor serving as the executive branch and the city council serving as the legislative branch. County commissioners perform a variety of functions, and some of them include making appointments for boards, commissions, and agencies, receiving bids and authorizing contracts, issuing bonds, preparing the annual budget for that part of the budget that's under their direct control, recommending to the county council a package of salaries and benefits for the county, controlling and maintaining all county property, including the jail and other properties, exercising the county's power of eminent domain, establishing, maintaining, and improving streets, roads, and highways in the unincorporated areas of Allen County. So as you can see, those are some significant opportunities for you to have an input on what happens in the future. And while it's often assumed that all of the departments within the county government report to the county commissioners, it's just not true. There are only 10 departments in county government that report directly to the county commissioners. And here's a list. Combined, these departments account for 18 percent of all county employees. So again, as you can see, the commissioners do have a great deal of influence over the operation of key services, and they make decisions that affect the growth and development of Allen County. The candidates for county commissioner are Nelson Peters, the Republican, and Fred Eckhart, the Democrat. On November 2nd, we will decide which of these two will become the newest county commissioner. Gentlemen, we thank you for joining us here on the debate this evening. Looking forward to the opportunity to talk with you. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to make an opening statement, and after the opening statement, the candidates will be asked questions drafted by the Greater Fort Wayne Chamber of Commerce and the Mike Down Center. The candidate who is asked the question will then have a minute and a half to answer. The other candidate will then have one minute to respond to the question or the answer. The candidate who was asked the question then has 30 seconds to rebut the response of the other candidate. The order for answering these questions will rotate between the candidates, with the first question going to the person who gave the second opening statement. To conclude our debate, each candidate will have a minute and a half to make a closing statement. The order of the closing statements will be opposite of the opening statements. The order of the opening statement was determined by a coin toss, and Mr. Eckhart won that toss. Gentlemen, again, our thanks for you for being here tonight, and let's begin tonight -- or let's begin with your opening statement, Mr. Eckhart.
Well, thank you, Lee. I appreciate that. And Nelson, it's good to see you tonight, too. Well, for me, the candidacy is about leadership. It's about leadership. It's about representation. It's about actions being taken in the behalf of all of the residents of Allen County. I think there's a great deal of data available which indicates that we're at a point in time where we need some change. We have seen many of our anchor businesses leave Allen County. We have seen wages deteriorate. We have seen people lose their health insurance as a result of the economic conditions. We've seen bickering and sort of separation among the county agencies. And I feel that it's time to really take a fresh look at county government, and in doing so, we want to emphasize, first of all, quality jobs; secondly, the effectiveness of government; and thirdly, what I call customer service. We do believe it's time for a change, and my candidacy is about representing the people's views of county government, seeking them out, and bringing them back to the government, and bringing people together to solve problems of mutual interest. That's what my candidacy is about, and I look forward to working with all of the people throughout the county of Allen. Thank you very much, and I look forward to talking with you about this.
Very well. Next, the opening statement from Mr. Nelson Peters.
Good evening, and thank you to our cosponsors for their interest in this debate, and to WFWA TV for agreeing to host it this evening. And thank you all for joining us tonight. The job of county commissioner is one of huge importance. When economic development, criminal justice, and budget shortage play such a prominent role in the way we deal with things, we need to ensure that these issues get the attention that they deserve. I'm running because I want to see this community do well. Allen County is a great place to live. It's a community to be proud of, and I am. I want to see this community thrive and prosper, and I have the tools to see that that happens. I'm a graduate of Snyder High School and Indiana University, where I earned a bachelor's degree in urban planning and a master's degree in public administration. I worked in both city and county government for 10 years as Director of Human Resources. I spent 10 years as a member of the Allen County Council. Five years ago, I partnered with a group to purchase a local manufacturing operation. I've brought jobs to Allen County. I've kept them here. I've had to meet weekly payrolls. I've had to meet a bottom line. The fact is, I understand business, and I understand county government.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. We'll move ahead with our first question tonight. You will have one minute and 30 seconds to answer. Mr. Eckhart, the question goes to you first. As one of the three county commissioners, you will be expected to take a leading role in the formation of both short- and long-term economic development strategy for all of us in Allen County. Please outline what will be your guiding principles and what you hope to accomplish over your term.
Well, my guiding principles are really to bring the stakeholders together to discuss what are the key interests -- the key issue areas for the county. That means quality jobs. That means technology. That means providing the infrastructure and the needs that manufacturing and businesses need to be willing to consider moving into Allen County. It means bringing people together through the corporate council. It means emphasizing and supporting the Economic Development Alliance. It means providing that infrastructure, and I believe that the basis for moving the economic development of the county forward is really to bring together those people who are leaders in the community to decide what types of businesses that they would like to have in Allen County and to provide the resources to make that happen. My view of this is that it's important to get the thought leaders from a wide segment of the population in Allen County to discuss this particular subject area. So it's bringing people together to talk about and discuss and decide what their strategic views are for economic development, and relying on the structures that are there right now, like the Economic Development Commission or Economic Development Alliance, the City-City Plan, the Corporate Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and many other organizations as well.
Very well. Mr. Peters, you have one minute.
Thank you, Lee. That's a great question. There are several tenets to my candidacy that I think will enhance the things that go on in Allen County. We need to look at economic development. We need to make sure that we've got jobs in the community, that we can bring jobs to the community, that we can keep jobs in the community. Criminal justice is another area that we need to stress. We're not going to get jobs in the community if people are afraid that they can't walk out into the streets at night. County efficiencies is another area that we've got to improve upon in Allen County. Right now, I think we've got customer service that could be improved. We've got a number of areas that people are just begging for better, more efficient, more effective government.
All right, Mr. Eckhart, 30 seconds.
Well, I think the role of the county commissioners is really that of a leadership role, where we bring together those stakeholders, bring together those people that have a special interest in this. We do need to streamline our government so that permitting and the process of supporting new businesses is refined and made more easy for people. Criminal justice in that area is something that's being administered by the sheriff and by the judges. I think that we influence that by bringing good jobs to Allen County.
Mr. Peters, next question is for you. What do you think can be done to improve the relationships within Allen County government and between the Allen County government and the city of Fort Wayne's government?
One of the things that I will bring to the table as your Allen County Commissioner is the ability to mediate. The experiences that I've had in the jobs that I have have necessitated that I be able to bring both parties to the table, have necessitated that I be able to reach accord on both sides in terms of reaching some sort of consensus, some sort of conclusion. I am a consensus builder. We need to knock down some of the walls to ensure that we can create greater efficiencies between city and county government, city and the outlying governments, county and the outlying governments, and a number of the entities that exist therein.
You have one minute to respond.
Well, thank you, Lee. I've had a great deal of experience in the business world. I'm a retiree from GE. I've worked in the field of organization development. I've worked extensively in conflict situations. I'm very familiar with team building and working to develop a shared vision. I've found that when people develop a shared vision, they're given the opportunity to participate in that process of developing that vision, and they start to come together. We do need to tear down the walls. It is entirely -- there are entirely too many barriers between the two cities, the county government, and the towns in Allen County. These barriers need to be reduced, because if we look at the total cost of government in Allen County, it's growing dramatically. In fact, in the last 12 years or so, the county budget has doubled from about $35 million to about $73 million. And it is time to tear down those barriers and to seek common agreement and seek common solutions to very big problems. I've had a great deal of experience doing that, both in the -- as a businessperson and as a consultant in my own business. So I look forward to doing that. I think it'd be great.
And you have 30 seconds if you want to add anything to that?
Sure, thanks. Just a quick correction. My opponent has stated that the county's budget is about $73 million. It's really closer to about $160 million when you include a number of the special funds that exist that the council has oversight of. But one of the other things that goes on right now that I think is beginning to happen is a little bit more cohesiveness than what we've seen in the past. We currently have a comprehensive development plan going on between the city and the county, and it seems to be working out very well.
Mr. Eckhart, your question, one minute, 30 seconds. What are the three most important things you could do as a county commissioner to improve the business climate here in Allen County?
Well, to improve the business climate, what we have to do is provide many things, like a supportive government, one that is responsive to the needs of the businesses for infrastructure improvements, for permitting relief, for educational benefits that can be provided through both the county and the educational institutions in Allen County. I think that a great deal can be done in terms of visibility and presence by the -- not only the county commissioners, but also bringing together the various heads of the local towns and the cities so that when we approach businesses, that we have an enthusiastic and coordinated approach to the government -- from the government to the businesses in Allen County. I think we have to show that we're really interested in them and that we're really seeking out ways to support them. It's interesting that Nelson would mention $160 million. Well, when we take -- for the county budget, when we take a look actually at what the total cost of general government is in Allen County, with just general government excluding the extras that he had referred to, we're talking about almost a quarter of a billion dollars a year. If we add in another $100 million a year on top of that, we're talking about $350 million a year. It is time for a serious change in the way we do things, and businesses will respond to governments that handle their issues in a more business-like fashion. I think we can do that by building bridges between the communities and the government leaders that we have, and then approaching our businesses in a uniform manner.
One minute.
Thank you, Lee. There are several things above and beyond the three that have been suggested that really need to occur to enhance economic development within the local Allen County community. One of those is we've got to begin to look at economic development on a regional basis. Presently, we've got some forces within Allen County, including Indiana Workforce Development, Region 3A District, and a few others that are splinter economic development groups. We have to get them under the umbrella of something like the Allen County Economic Development Alliance and begin to develop a coordinated plan so we can battle what's going to be happening down in Indianapolis and some of those areas where our major competition is going to be. Two other things briefly is to ensure that there is an available workforce through expanding curriculums in local universities, and to ensure that we've got available infrastructure and improvements, including things like tax abatements and so forth, to lure these companies.
And the last 30 seconds on this topic go to you.
Well, I've presented regularly at the Pohagin Industrial Conference to -- from a regional perspective. I've worked on the school to work regional district. I think regionalization is very important, as Allen County and Fort Wayne is the economic driver of development for northeast Indiana. I think we also have to work with our state legislators who can provide abatements through the I-69 work, tax abatement laws that are now in effect. And I believe that by presenting a unified, coordinated approach to this, we will be appealing to a lot more businesses. We need to improve the marketing of our area. We have a beautiful county with great people in it, and we need to improve the marketing of the assets that we have. The Economic Development Alliance is really under-resourced right now. They are doing a great job, but they need more support from us. The Corporate Council is willing to help, and I think that that will be a big advantage to Allen County.
Next question, also about economic development, goes to you, Mr. Peters. The economy here in Allen County is clearly in transition, as it is around the country. We've lost many of our quality manufacturing jobs for a variety of reasons, many of them outside local control. What is it that you, as a county commissioner, can do to help rebuilding the local economy around the characteristics that more closely resemble the new economy that's developing in our country?
I think, Lee, what we need to do is we need to look at where the real niche for economic development is in this community. We are so close to Warsaw right now that we ought to be looking at some things like medical, orthopedics, those types of things. It would be just a natural based on where we exist in relationship to that marketplace. Look at where we exist in relationship to cities like Indianapolis, Toledo, Cincinnati, Cleveland. Why don't we begin to go after some logistics-type efforts? We do have some of the infrastructure here to provide for that, and there's absolutely no reason that we can't make some of that work in terms of getting local business to want to locate here in Fort Wayne and Allen County.
You have one minute, Mr. Eckhart.
Well, I think the reality is that we're in a global competition, and it's a difficult process. It's not going away. We have to help make our government and our county a globally competitive location. I think we need to look for not only the clusters of industries that make sense for us, like defense, like medical, like biotechnology, but we also need to encourage research-based developments and research-based companies through incentives that can come in. And I think that we need to also continue to work on improving our transportation availability, our intranet capacity in Allen County. So I think there's a number of things that we need to do, but most of all, we need the will to recognize that we are in a global economy, and we are competing with people around the world, and we need to be educated as to how we can do that better than we have been doing. I think we can bring that to the county here.
And, Mr. Peters, the last 30 seconds for you.
Thank you. Part of what we're going to have to do to compete is simply change the way that we do business in Allen County as far as economic development goes right now. We have to look from a regional perspective. We're going to have to get more competitive, and as much as I'd like to say that we can, we in Allen County can't do it ourselves. There is buying power. There is strength in numbers by including a nine-county statistical metropolitan standard area and getting those people to buy into the concept of regionalized economic development.
Next question, also in the line of economic development, it goes to you, Mr. Peters. One minute, 30 seconds to answer this one. Here in Allen County, we are fortunate, we are blessed, to have the potential, at least, to make a lot of really great strides. Fiscal issues, lack of consensus among elected officials, often though curtails the ability to bring about lasting and positive change. Would you support the formation or the restructuring of a local body, kind of similar to the Convention and Tourism Authority, that would act as a capital improvement board to bring about consensus, fiscal responsibility, and long-term prioritization of capital projects for the county?
Absolutely and without question. Right now, the Convention and Tourism Authority does have some authority to do some of the things that you'd mentioned. They have some ability to emulate the current board that exists in Indianapolis that has been ever so successful in drawing capital, projects, and great economic development things to the city of Indianapolis. We lack in some areas in Allen County in the area of planning. One of the things that a capital improvement board would help us do would be to help us develop that planning, help us get a real grip on what's out there and perhaps what can be attracted in terms of capital programs to the county. We have debates that exist right now within the county that are a little frustrating. You look at the Coliseum Debate versus the Downtown Debate. You look at the Hotel Debates versus the Grand Wayne Center Debates. We've got to have somebody come in, provide that expertise to the commissioners, and give them the opportunity to come up with viable decisions. Now, I'm not advocating a board that has the power to tax, or the power to bond, or the power to incur debt on behalf of the commissioners, but I am advocating somebody that can come in and provide the expertise and help the commissioners and Allen County get through the process of capital development.
Mr. Eckhart, you have one minute on that question.
Well, I think this process starts with leadership from the commissioners. I'm not really in favor of adding another bureaucratic group to the government. What I am in favor, though, is bringing people together in study groups and anyone that's interested in discussing this. We can put together groups and task forces to do that type of thing, but the leadership issue is the one that comes first. And the county commissioners, as far as I am concerned, need to show the leadership among all of the commissions that we have already in place through the Economic Development Alliance, through the chamber, through the Planning and Zoning Commissions, and so forth. We need to influence that in a positive way, solicit those opinions, and solicit the other leaders in the county itself. So I'm not in favor of forming a new commission. I am in favor, however, of the leadership that needs to be demonstrated by the county commissioners in tackling this particular problem.
And I think the last 30 goes to you.
Thank you. I would love to sit here and tell everybody in Allen County that, as commissioner, I will have the answer to every single question that's out there as soon as it's asked, but that's just impossible based on the nature of county government. I will certainly find the answers for anybody who's got questions regarding Allen County government. The issue of capital development is a huge issue, and in that, we're going to have to derive some support from some folks out in the field.
Next question is about county government finances. Nelson, I think you have a minute 30 to answer this one first. There are no silver bullets. I think we've lived long enough in this area to see that all of us have a place to play, a role to play in county finances. Nobody has the single biggest answer, but what can you do as a commissioner to help maintain the cost for running county government?
Well, I appreciate that question, Lee, because I've long been passionate about the need to streamline what's going on in county government. Right now, there are 161 funds that make up the county's budget, and out of those funds, 90 million of them are non-general fund dollars. One of those are general fund dollars. You have a county council right now who has oversight only -- over only about 95 of those funds. The General Assembly established a number of those funds for specific purposes in county government. Unfortunately, what happens right now is that many of the people who have needs for specific causes go to the general fund to take dollars before they actually look at the funding that they have in their own back pocket. We have to watch over and be vigilant in making sure that the funds that are expended are funds that are utilized for the purpose in which the General Assembly established them.
All right. One minute, Mr. Eckhart.
Well, my approach to this is that I think what we need to do is we need to -- in the departments that will report to me, I think we need to have a very deliberate budget scrubbing process on a regular basis. I think we need to set productivity targets that are achievable. I think we have to bring people into the process of achieving those targets. I think they have to be measured on that. I think we need to be sure that the performance appraisals are done, which reflect that type of commitment to achieve a better, more effective way of dealing with the county budget. And I think we also have to start to look at the county budgets as a system of services that flow throughout the county and engage all of the county agencies. So my view is that it's a system of services that has to work together. We need to take a look at it from a systemic point of view.
And the last 30 seconds to you.
Lee, we need to develop a planning committee to help oversee the county's long- and short-term capital needs. Right now, those concerns take up about 20 percent of the entire budget, and that's a huge number. We need to have individuals who can help assist in determining on short- and long-term basis as to whether or not those specific needs are really necessary. Let's look at some other things in terms of consolidation of bid sheets, general liability programs, things like that to cut the budget.
We've come to the end of the half hour. Time for us to move into closing statements, and, Mr. Eckhart, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about the county today. My view, again, is that Allen County is a terrific place. It has great opportunities, and it's in a point in time where it needs to change and move forward. I think what we need to do, more than anything else, is to engage the hearts and minds of all the people and bring to the process fewer barriers and more cooperative relationships between the various governmental entities in Allen County. What I am looking forward to in my campaign, based on my business experience and my background here in Allen County and serving in many capacities throughout the county, is to do just that, is to bring people together to solve problems of mutual interest. I think what we -- I think the economic development issue is critical because the finances of the county are really at a crisis point right now, and we need to bring people together to find out how we can have system savings and bring in things like Six Sigma and other cost-saving techniques. My candidacy is about bringing people together to save money for the county and to improve services. I think we can do that by representing the folks and going out and finding out what their opinions are and incorporating them into our government.
And the closing statements tonight from Mr. Peters. One minute, 30 seconds.
Thanks again to the Michael Down Center for Indiana Politics and the Greater Fort Wayne Area Chamber of Commerce for cosponsoring this debate. Thanks to WFWA TV for hosting the debate, and to you, Lee, for moderating this event. Fred appreciated the opportunity to debate you tonight and look forward to continuing to see you along the campaign trail. I have the experience to lead this county. I have the background and the ability, and moreover, I have the passion. These are the qualities that qualify me for this job. I believe you, too, will find that I am best qualified to be your next Allen County Commissioner. I understand what being a public servant means. It means not only keeping jobs here in Allen County, but it means spending tax dollars only where private dollars cannot be utilized for the good of the whole. Much can be done to ensure that Allen County is governed effectively and efficiently and that you are well represented. I'm asking for your vote on November 2nd. God willing, and with your support, we can make a beneficial difference to this community. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
And thank you, both gentlemen. Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you also to all those who were sponsoring the event. You heard some of them earlier. They are, of course, WFWA, the Greater Fort Wayne Chamber of Commerce, IPFW, and the Michael Down Center for Indiana Politics. And of course, our thanks to you for watching tonight. If you're not sure where you go to vote, or if you're not registered to vote, you can call voter registration at 449-7154. And if you'd like to cast an absentee ballot, you can call the election board again at 449-7329, or stop by the offices. They're at 602 South Calhoun Street. That's right across the street from the City-City Building. I'm Lee Kelso. This has been a special edition of Primetime 39. Again, our thanks to you. Again, our thanks to you for watching. We hope that you'll get out and vote November 2nd.